So, thank you for the best of yesterday.
Oh, sir. It's much better. Yes. There was too many responses. I gave my... Contra town.
(laughing).
Of what?
(laughing).
What did he say?
Contra towns.
I totally heard the contra town.
That was awesome.
(laughing).
He said about three bands.
He's...
Totally got it.
She's not laughing.
Yeah. You have done.
I thought she said...
(inaudible).
No, I mean, I'm not sure. He would look into attracting this. So, she would say, oh, uh, okay.
He's so happy right now. So proud he is.
Somebody said, somebody said something about a snipe or something. I, I heard when my wife told me, somebody answered a snipe or something. Is that you? Have you been sniping? I told you about that.
I had to wait for it. I'll be even better.
Are, are we ready?
I didn't see either.
Are you sure?
Yes.
All good. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We always enjoy having people join us for these meetings and certainly appreciate our men and women in blue and welcome to our police department. For the record, it is August 16th at 6:00 PM. I'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'm gonna have to work on that one.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilmember Mylum.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Borton.
Here.
Councilmember Berg.
Here.
And I'm here, too.
And Mayor DeWier.
Item number two is the pledge of allegiance. If you all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is our community invocation. Tonight will be led by Pastor Troy Drake. So, it's Calvary Chapel, and welcome. If you will all join us in the invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. It's always nice seeing you.
Councilmembers, let's pray. God in heaven, I just want to acknowledge, first of all, that you're Lord over all things and you care about all things and every person. And we just thank you for this free country that we have and this great city that we get to live in and pursue where we want to live and what we want to do, and we just appreciate that more and more as we see the things around the world play out, Lord. So, we thank you for this place. And God, we are praying for safety for our city tonight, that there would be peace in Meridian, and we pray for the, the police officers, the firefighters, the paramedics, all those who are emergency responders, and we appreciate them, and just ask that you would keep them safe and that our community would be peaceful. And lastly, God, we just pray for these folks here who serve our city, our elected officials, and that you would give them a great amount of wisdom in all the matters of the city that they have to attend to tonight, and we appreciate them, Lord, and we just pray that you give them a great grace and knowledge about what they're supposed to do, even in small things. And so, bless them, God, and bless our time here in this gathering, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Berg.
On item 5E, the resolution number is 16-1157. On 8A, that application has been asked, requested by applicant to continue to 9/6/2016, and with that, I move we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the amendment or amended agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item five is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Berg.
As stated earlier, 5E, the resolution number is 16-1157. With that, I move we approve the consent agenda and the mayor to sign, the clerk to attest.
Second.
A motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Berg.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 6A is under our police department, and so I'll turn this over to Chief Levy. You can smile.
I'm ready.
It's been a long day. Madam Mayor, Council, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak first today. With our growing city, one of the things that we often do is add new employees, and probably the greatest pleasure I have is recognizing new employees for the police department and then introducing them to you all and into the community as well. So, what I'd like to do is ask our three newest officers to come forward and stand over here to my left. And then what we are going to do is, is give a small introduction. They were instructed that they had to prepare a speech for 10 minutes each, but I guess I should tell them now that they don't have to. And then, we're gonna do a swearing-in ceremony, and then we would like to open it up for any pictures that their family have, to take pictures. Come, stand right up in front, don't be bashful, get the best pictures that you can, we'll take the time to make that happen. So, with that being said, I would like to introduce our three newest officers, and as you know, or I have told you in the past, we hire both lateral officers and new recruits, and we kind of alternate back and forth. This time, these three officers are lateral officers, and they came from other cities. I will tell you what cities those are, with the mayors of those cities.
So, I can give my apologies, right?
But I'd like to introduce Tevita Messenger. He's a two-year police officer, he comes from the city of Twin Falls. And Brandon Esparza, Brandon comes with us with five years of law enforcement experience, and he comes from the city of Caldwell. And Scott Frazier, who has two years of law enforcement experience, and he comes from the city of Mountain Home. And we are also, just to let you know, in a process of hiring five more officers to fill the open positions that we have. With that being said, I would like for the officers to raise their right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Tevita Messenger.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the constitutional laws of the state of Idaho.
And the constitutional laws of the state of Idaho.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Meridian.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Meridian.
That I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
That I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the policies and procedures of the Meridian police.
And the policies and procedures of the Meridian police.
That I'll obey all lawful orders.
That I will obey all lawful orders.
From those appointed over me.
From those appointed over me.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully discharge all the duties of police officer.
Faithfully discharge all the duties of police officer.
In and for the city of Meridian.
In and for the city of Meridian.
State Idaho.
State Idaho.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
(applause). We can dig more up. Go turn around again, this is...
Madam Mayor, Council, that's all I have. If there's any comments or questions, I'll stand for those now.
Chief, I, I guess I would love to hear from each of the officers, and if you have, if you have family here, if you would introduce your family.
We can make that happen, and I'll just step right out of the way.
I am, I'm Tevita Messenger. I have with me my wife Jenny, my three children, also my father, my uncle, and my brother.
All right. Welcome.[633.54][633.54](applause).
I'm Scott Frazier. It's a pleasure and an honor to work for the city of Meridian. With me, I have my sister McKenzie and my dad Randy. My mother Sandy couldn't make it, she's out of town.
Thank you.[650.29][650.29](applause).
Councilman and Mayor, my name is Brandon Esparza. I have with me my wife, my two sons, my dad, and a really great friend of mine, so they're here to enjoy the stay.
Thank you.[667.73][667.73](applause). I would like to welcome you to the city of Meridian. You've joined a premier's police department and family. I would like to, to speak to your families. We appreciate that you're sharing your loved ones. We want to assure you that, that we take the safety of our officers very serious. They keep our, our streets safe in return. We want to make sure they return safely home. So, thank you for sharing your loved one with us. We greatly appreciate it. Like I said, we truly believe that we have the best police force in not only the state of Idaho, but in the nation, and certainly it's one of the reasons that our community has been recognized as the best place to live. It's because we're a safe place, and I get numerous comments, emails, and messages about the respect that our citizens get from our police force. We take that very serious, and we welcome you to our team, and thank you for what service you're going to give to our community, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Council, any, any comments? Thank you again, and our heartfelt thanks to those that are here to support you, because they'll need your support.
Madam Mayor, Council, I don't know if we are the best in the nation.
Yes, we are.
But, but, there is a but, but if you don't believe it, it will never happen, so we do believe it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing this, Chief.[788.98][788.98](applause).
And to the families, you really don't have to sit through the rest of our meeting.
Really?
Okay, there were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move right into item eight, under action items. Item 8A has been requested by the applicant to continue to September 6th. Council, I would appreciate a motion on this request.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Berg.
I move we continue H 2016-0086 to September 6, 2016.
Okay. A second to continue item 8A until September 6th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 8B is a public hearing for H 2016-0068. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
You be Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is a, an application for preliminary and final plat combination. The site consists of approximately 0.19 acres, of an acre of land. It's currently zoned R4 and is located at 2795 South Velvet Falls Way. The property is located within the Salmon Rapids subdivision number four and is surrounded by single-family residential properties which are also zoned R4. The preliminary plat for Salmon Rapids subdivision was approved in 1994, and the Salmon Rapids number four final plat was approved in 1995. This, the comprehensive plan, future land use map designation for this piece is medium-density residential. The combined preliminary and final plat is proposed, consisting of one building lot on, as I said, .19 of an acre of land in the R4 zoning district. The proposed subdivision is a re-subdivision of Lot 5, Block 7 of the Salmon Rapids subdivision number four. The lot in question is dedicated as, as a common lot, however, it was never counted as part of the, of the required open space for the subdivision, for the Salmon Rapids subdivision. The proposed plat complies with the dimension standards of the R4 district. Access is proposed via existing local streets. Future structures on these building lots are required to comply with the current UDC standards. Since the commission hearing did receive public comment from Eric and Kimberly Shaner, I believe they're a neighbor adjacent to this property who actually did comment in the previous hearing. So, a summary of the commission, of the commission public hearing. The applicant Kent Musso was in favor. In opposition and commenting are, as I said, Eric Shaner. Written testimony for that meeting, none was, was received. I was the staff member presenting that application, as well as Bill Parsons. Key issues of public testimony on that were losing what the applicants were calling open space for the existing, or, excuse me, the neighbors were calling open space for the existing development. Key issues of discussion by the commission were height of the proposed house, whether one-story or two-story. Commission changes to the staff recommendation that the applicant shall comply with the submitted elevation. There are no outstanding issues for council. With that, I'll stand for any questions you have.
Thank you, Josh. Council, any questions for staff? The applicant here is this evening. Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Kent Musso. I'm here representing Musso Construction. My address is 320 11th Avenue South in Nampa. We are also, we're the developer for the plat, and we also have the purchase of the property under contract. In fact, tomorrow is the closing date pending the result of this hearing. So, I'd just like to quickly introduce the project and explain a bit about the peculiarities of the parcel that explain why we're trying to replat an existing lot within a subdivision. My ultimate intent is to build a personal residence for my wife and I. The home that we plan to build is gonna be a 1750 square foot, single-level home, about 19 feet tall. The design of the home is created with the intent to be consistent with the surrounding homes in the existing Salmon Rapids subdivision. So, I'd also like to talk about the unique history of this property, which is why this plat is being requested. As Josh mentioned, it was platted as common area. The reason for that was that the lot originally housed an irrigation well and pump that served the Salmon Rapids subdivision when it was originally created about 20 years ago, and as a result, that, the plat was restricted, restricted this lot as common area to be owned and maintained by the homeowners association. But although the plat said that the lot was to be owned by the homeowners association, it was deeded to Nampa and Meridian Irrigation District, who is the only owner who's ever existed for this parcel. When the irrigation company abandoned the well and pump that was on the lot, the lot was no longer needed, and Nampa and Meridian Irrigation District began the process to sell the property. Their first choice was to sell the property to the homeowners association, but because no agreement was reached and the property was listed for sale, as I mentioned before, the property is now under contract to be sold to Musso Construction. There's been one reasonable concern that's come up, is the, one of the concerns that Eric Shaner from the past hearing brought up, and I, I don't see him here today, so I'll try to represent that the best that I can. The primary concern with him, as well as other homeowners around this property, has been that creating a new plat for this parcel would create an independent subdivision that was not accountable to the Salmon Rapids Association. And because I am sympathetic to that concern, I have come to an agreement with the homeowners association. Over the next few weeks, we're gonna be conducting a, a vote with the members to annex this property into their subdivision, and because this is in their best interest, I don't anticipate that being a problem. I, I think that the vote will be for approval of the annexation, but we also have a fallback plan in case that, in case they vote not to annex the subdivision, and in that case, I will create CCNRs to mirror the Salmon Rapids CCNRs that would give enforcement authority to their association, as well as include dues to be managed, or paid along with the property, matching the other homeowners in the subdivision. My wife and I are very excited to get this project started and to be a part of the Salmon Rapids community, so thank you for your time and consideration. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. I, I would just like to say, I appreciate the work that you've done in working with HOA, with your neighbors, in trying to fit into a pre-existing neighborhood, and I guess what struck me is that you're trying to join an HOA. Most people are trying to get out of them.
Right.
So, I just want to thank you for going above and beyond. I greatly appreciate that.
Thank you.
Council, any questions?
I have none.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to offer testimony on this application? Okay, if the applicant has any further comment, council, any further questions for staff? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Berg.
I move we close the public hearing on H 2016-0068.
Second. Motion, a second, to close the public hearing on item 8B. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Berg.
I move we approve H 2016-0068 and include all staff, applicant, and written testimony.
Second. I have a motion, a second, to approve item 8B. If there's no discussion by council, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Berg.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Thank you. Item 8C is a public hearing on H 2016-0074. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Mayor, members of council, this is an application for a development agreement modification. The site consists of approximately nine acres of land, which is zoned CC, and located at 870 West Eustick Road. The applicant is requesting to amend the recorded development agreement approved with the annexation of the property back in 2007. In that development agreement that was signed in 2008, the applicant was granted direct access to Eustick Road. Due to policy changes at ACHD and city code changes, direct access to Eustick Road is no longer desired by both parties. In working with the applicant, city staff and ACHD are supportive of an interim access to Eustick Road until such time that a public street and/or shared driveway are constructed with the development of the property to the west. To ensure the interim access is terminated in the future, staff require the applicant to submit a revised concept plan with a concurrent development agreement modification application prior to adopting of the findings by city council. The provided concept plan was to provide details on how the site would be designed after the removal of the temporary access to Eustick Road, and I'll show you those here. This is the approved concept plan, and this is how that will be, the access will be, will be terminated in the future when the, the access to Eustick Road goes away and will become parking in some, some open space here. So, in general, staff is supportive of the requested changes to the DA. To move forward with the development of the site as proposed by the applicant, staff recommends the following development agreement provisions. They read it, "Except for the two access points noted on the plat, no lot shall have direct access to Eustick Road or Venable Avenue. Place a note on the face of the final plat prohibiting a direct lot access to Eustick Road and Venable Avenue. The single slash temporary access to Eustick Road shall be terminated at the time the property to the west constructs an access to Eustick Road that aligns with North Blairmore Way." And B, a cross-access easement agreement shall be recorded for the all commercial lots within the subdivision. All lots within the subdivision shall have access to the public streets via private drive aisles. This agreement shall be recorded, and the copy of said agreement submitted to the city prior to the city engineer's signature on the final plat, or a note shall be added to the face of the final plat granting said cross-access. Did not receive any written testimony on this application. Staff is recommending approval, and I'll stand for any questions you have.
Thank you. Josh, council, any questions?
I have none at this time.
Okay, would the applicant like to make comment? Good evening, thank you for joining us. If you'll state your name and address for the record.
Thank you very much. My name is Lance Warnock, professional engineer with Aspen Engineers. Business address is 485 West Main, or Peel Box 205, Kuna, 83634.
Thank you.
Here tonight, represent the owner, Segal 3 LLC. Want to thank staff. Josh did a good job introducing the project. Essentially, what we did is, oh, eight to 10 years ago, we started plating the property. The goal at that time was to create a series of lots that could be sold. The property was essentially diva, divided into quadrants, with one road kind of in the midpoint going north-south, that would connect from the subdivision to the north, down to Eustick on the south, and then a public road extending east-west. As, staff has stated, we submitted a, resubmitted the plat last fall, pretty much just having the same configuration. ACHD, as you know, is in the process of pursuing a widening to Eustick Road, and is, in compliance with their new design and policies, they, they were trying to limit the number of access points to Eustick Road. So, they had suggested that we do not have public roads inside the development, that instead we use private drives, and so we've spent the last many months negotiating with the ACHD, and we finally have a set of conditions and things are signed, and so we're able to, to now present the DA mod for your consideration. You know, as Josh has stated, the, the access to Eustick is, is considered temporary, we'll have full access on that, and then when we get some connection over on the west, that connection to Eustick will go away. So, we're in agreement with staff conditions and ask for your approval, and I'd stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
I have none.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to provide testimony on this item? Okay, seeing none, council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Berg.
I move we close the public hearing on H 2016-0074.
Second. I have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing on item 8C. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Berg.
I move that we approve H 2016-0074, and to include staff and applicant comment.
Second. I have a motion, a second, to approve item 8C. If there's no discussion by council, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Berg.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 8D is a public hearing for Creason Creek Number One. Item H 2016-0087. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Just, just so you're aware, this is noticed on the agenda as two separate items, but my, my presentation, it's one single item, it was one application, so that's how my presentation will proceed, just so that we're, just so that we're not confused. So, as I said, this is for development agreement modification and a final plat modification. The site consists of approximately 15.75 acres of land, zoned R8, and is located near the southeast... the southeast corner of North Linder and West Eustick Roads. The applicant is requesting to amend the recorded development agreement approved with the annexation of, of the subject property, recorded as instrument number 2016-019362. Additionally, the applicant requests approval to modify the Crimson Creek Number One final plat to convert Lot 4, Block 1 to a common lot or drainage lot, and to relocate the proposed pathway outside of the Nampa Meridian Irrigation District due to their requirements. The site consists of four legal parcels. The applicant would like to start construction on four houses, one on each parcel. I have a diagram here that shows how the applicant proposes to do that. Therefore, the applicant requests a new development agreement provision to be included that would allow the applicant to obtain approval of those four building permits prior to the property being subdivided. Provided that access to the building sites meets the fire department's standards and any other applicable life safety requirements, staff does not object to the applicant commencing construction on these four structures. The structure should be located so that they comply with the setbacks of the R8 zoning district for the future platted lots. Prior to issuance of a certificate of zoning, a certificate of occupancy, rather, for these structures, the final plat should be recorded and all improvements completed. So, just some small details here, as you see on the left here, this is the approved final plat, the configuration of the path going, going along the, the edge of this lot. The proposed final plat moves the pathway, as you see here on the landscape plan, through what used to be a buildable lot and is now, now a common lot. So, the plat changes in that regard, and that the, the pathway will then be moved outside of the irrigation district's easement and along a common lot there. So, the, the conditions governing the development agreement, this is 5.1C, are the, the conditions that the staff recommends that we modify in order to make this function as it should. The applicant shall be granted approval to obtain four building permits prior to the recordation of the final plat. The applicant shall not, however, be granted any certificates of occupancy until such time as the plat is recorded, and all site improvements are accepted by the city. The issuance of these four building permits shall be after the satisfactory completion of the following prerequisite items. A domestic water system shall be installed, tested, and activated so that the fire hydrants are available during construction. The sanitary sewer system shall be installed and tested. At a minimum, a compacted gravel road base shall be in place that will support the weight of a fire apparatus of 75,000 pounds, and at a minimum, temporary street signs will need to be in place. The proposed changes to the final plat are as follows. One, plat note number seven, currently this plat does not indicate that Lot 4, Block 1 is a common lot for the subdivision. That would need to be changed. And two, modify condition 5B to read as follows. Lot 4, Block 1 shall be designed to include a 10-foot-wide multi-use pathway in landscape standards set forth in the UDC 3A8 and UDC 3B11, or 12C. The developer shall provide a minimum 14-foot-wide recreational pathway easement covering the pathway route for city council approval and recordation to break four-foot-tall bollard lighting or other appropriate lighting source along all pathways through common areas that are not visible from the public street as set forth in UDC 11388H. This, number two, is a modification of a current condition for that final plat. With that, staff stands for any questions you have, and we are recommending approval of these changes.
Counsel, any questions at this time? Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address.
Madam Counsel, my name is Bob Unger. I'm with ULC Management, 6104 North Gary Lane, Boise, Idaho, 83714. And I represent CS2 LLC, who's the owner developer.
Thank you.
If I might, can I address both items?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. First of all, on the plat amendment, we have no issues or anything. I think staff did a great job of, of reviewing the, you know, what we needed and the basis for it, and we have no issues with the staff report on that or the conditions of approval. On the development agreement modification, I think staff did another, you know, excellent job of being accurate with their report and, and our request. The only issue that we have with, with staff's report is the, the conditions, this is on the development agreement, the conditions governing development of subject property, 5.1C and sub-items A, B, C, and D. And I'll try to make this brief. As far as the domestic water being installed, tested, activated, and hydrants available for, for the construction, in order for us to accomplish that, joint trench has to complete their work. Joint trench are, they're the, the utility company that puts in all of the gas, power, cable, phone, et cetera. And at this point, we're at least six to eight weeks out from them starting and completing their work. On the sanitary sewer system being installed and tested, the sewer cannot be approved until such time as the roads are paved and the concrete collars have been poured and everything is sealed, because you have to do a, a pressure test, and it has to hold the pressure for a certain length of time. So, certainly, that's 10 to 12 weeks out at best. And as far as the signs, which is under D, there is a sign at the intersection of Pebblestone and 12th Avenue, which is directly north and east. It's in the northeast corner of our project. I was fortunate enough, I got this staff report very late on Friday afternoon, didn't have a chance to really discuss it with anybody. First thing Monday morning, I contacted the fire department, and I was fortunate enough to meet Rick Jackson with the fire department, or their representative, on the site to review the project. And Josh, can you pull that map up for me, please? So, this map shows that we're, the four lots that we're requesting the early starts on, it's Lot 14, 15 of Block 2, and lots 2 and 3 of Block 3. And as you can see, Pebblestone Drive is the stub street into our project. So, when I met with Rick Jackson, we discussed these specific requirements, and if you, at the intersection of Eustick and West 12th Drive, there is an existing fire hydrant that is operating currently and is charged. The distance from that to the end of the current stub street of Pebblestone is 165 feet. And he indicated that that, that was sufficient room for them to connect to the fire hydrant and get their, provide fire protection and water to these four lots. In addition, he had no idea why sewer would need to be in and installed and approved as far as getting the building permits, at least for early start. And then, so, the more we discussed it, we realized, and he, he agreed with us, that if we were to put in the, the base at least 170 feet in to our project on Pebblestone Drive, that would support their vehicle, then they would be able to access these four lots for fire protective services, because each lot would be less than 150 feet from the truck. And so, and we've done this before on other projects, so I was a little bit surprised when Josh required these specific items. So, what we would be asking of the council is to modify this particular condition of approval to remove subitem A, B, and D, and change item C to read that, at a minimum, a compacted road base shall be in place, a minimum 170 feet on West Pebblestone Drive in compliance with Meridian Fire Department. So, that, that's what we're requesting at this time, and I believe we, the representative here is aware of our request on this. And I would hope that he would comment.
Okay. Do you have any other comments?
No, I believe that covers it.
Counsel, any questions for the applicant? Chief Fadiz, Kevin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's Chief Fadizy from the Meridian Fire Department, representing. I, I also read the report from Rick, and I also talked to Chief Neymeyer before he left town, and he, he was of the same opinion that that, that hydrant would be sufficient to, for those four lots to give us adequate fire flow. And I also agree with him that 170 feet into the, 170 feet compacted into the property, is that correct?
Yes.
As long as we also included that it's 20 feet wide into that, that way we can get more than one vehicle in there if we have to. But with everything else, I agree, the signage is there, the fire flow and the hydrant is there, and so we have identification and, and serviceable hydrant, so we should be good to go with, with his suggested changes.
Okay. Thank you. Any concerns from Public Works? You know, Kyle, every once in a while, we have to throw you a question.
Madam Mayor, I talked to Warren Stewart, city engineer, about this. Quite frankly, we don't support it. I'm not sure why we would do this. We have processes for developing property, and there's a reason for the processes, and when we don't follow them, we sometimes end up with things we don't, we don't like, we wish we wouldn't have, like houses without sewer or without water. So, it'd be my preference, and I think Warren's preference, to have this project go through the normal process.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, any questions at this point? Thank you. This is a public hearing on item 8D. Is there any member of the public who would like to provide testimony on this item? Okay. Counsel.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
Did we open D and E?
Yes.
Yes. I opened by number.
Okay.
The public hearing was for item D, but it also applies to the application under
Once again, Bob Unger. I just wanted to comment, I understand Public Works' concerns, but I think it's also important to understand that we cannot get a C of O on any of these structures until such time as the plat is recorded, sewer is installed, and these buildings are connected. So, if, for some reason, the plat never gets recorded, we're doing this at risk, and we understand that, that if for some reason that plat didn't get recorded, that these buildings cannot be occupied. So, I mean, I don't, I don't think that we're, you know, that the city would be sticking their neck out real far on this, in that the plat has to be recorded to get C of Os.
So, are you going to keep open trenches then for the period until you have a finished product? I mean, there's various levels of inspection points, and I, I frankly don't understand the timing and, and the, how that process would work.
Madam Mayor, actually, we, right now, the sewer and water are installed. They're already in place. We have had inspections as we've gone along. We're waiting for joint trench to come in and do their part, and then we'll come back and we'll put down our road base, and our curbs, gutter sidewalks, et cetera. So, there won't be any open trenches. I mean, they're all there.
To the home?
Pardon?
To the, to the residence? There won't?
No.
How do you extend sewer to it? So, you have...
Well, there are, there are sewer stubs from the sewer line into the lot, approximately, approximately 15 feet into the lot itself. That's the sewer stub. And when you build the house, they connect the sewer to that stub. So, it's already there. So, just like any other subdivision that is platted and recorded, a guy gets his building permit, he comes in, he digs down, he connects the sewer and runs it to the house.
I understand that. I built my house. So, but I also know that part of that, the, the pipe was damaged, and later on, we didn't find it till later on. So, how, how do those things avoid not happening?
Okay. At each sewer stub, there is a 2x4 sticking up out of the ground, shows the builder exactly where that sewer stub is. And all he has to do is dig down and tie his sewer line into it. And that would be, you know, through a standard plumbing permit. And those, like I said, those are all installed, they're all there. So, there won't be really any open trenches, other than when the plumber connects to the sewer stub.
Mr. Bird.
Bob, you're, if I'm understanding you right, your infrastructure's in. Water and sewer is to each lot, each one of those four lots.
Yes, sir.
All they gotta do is hook up.
Yeah. Once, once everything is built...
Once they build, they can just, all they have to do is hook up.
Correct.
What's the problem? I mean, that, that's standard, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
I mean, when you build a house, if your infrastructure's in, what are you, what are you waiting for? Track utilities or whatever you got doing? What are they doing?
Gas.
Well, they do the gas, power, phone, cable, and they lay all that as they go. They don't dig a whole bunch of trenches and lay it and backfill it. They lay it as they go.
And that's in the road?
It is, no, it's, actually, it's not. It is, it is within a 10-foot easement behind, outside the right-of-way, on either side of the road.
Hmm. Mr. Palmer.
So, I guess I'm trying to understand, it seems like you're not really doing construction out of order, just kind of the paperwork out of order, just so that it was more convenient to get the project done? Or is there still some construction that's happening in a different order than it would be?
Yeah. Mr. Palmer, yes. Typically, we could not, typically, we cannot get a building permit until the plat is recorded. We probably will not see a recorded plat until mid to late October, which puts these builders into winter construction. And it would, they would like to get started earlier than that, and they know that they're not going to be finished before we have it recorded, because they'll take, you know, they're going to take probably four months to build each one of these buildings, although we have two builders that are working. So, yes, that's kind of what it is. It's, you know, it's moving the paperwork ahead on that part, with the understanding that they cannot occupy that residence until the plat is recorded.
Madam Mayor, follow up. So, to me, it looks like they're just trying to be more efficient as a private sector than the government can keep up with, and so, makes sense to me.
Do we're the government?
We are.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
Bob, just to clarify a couple of things. So the system is in this, because one of these... Because B is sanitary system, shall be installed and tested. It's in, it just hasn't had time to be tested yet, is that correct?
Well, there are... Ms. Milam, there are certain requirements in order to get those tested and approved by the city. And those specific requirements are for the water, the joint trench has to be in, because while they're putting joint trench, they could damage, say, a water meter or something to that effect. So once joint trench is in, that's when we can test the water system, sanitize it, and charge it. And with the sewer, we can't... We really can't test it until the manhole rings are in place and sealed, because we have to pump air pressure into the system to... And it has to hold for a certain length of time. So that's the holdup, because we're looking, like I said, six to eight weeks for joint trench to be done, so we can get our water, and then sewer would be probably four weeks after that even.
Madam Mayor, follow up. And on D, the street signs, temporary street signs, you wanted to eliminate that, because there won't be streets?
Yeah, Councilman Milam, there is a street sign at the corner of...
Pebblestone?
Twelfth Drive and Pebblestone Drive. There's an existing one there, and fire felt that that would be sufficient. Put something temporarily up, but some idiot's going to knock it over. Never fails.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Nary.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we haven't had, and planning has probably a better knowledge of this, but I don't think we've had very many applications for early building permits on anything other than commercial properties. And in most of those occasions, and there's not a lot of those, they still retain ownership of the property. So the part that I think Kyle was referring to in saying we have processes is not just getting infrastructure put in, but having these properties recorded with the property lines have been defined and recorded. And when you do all of that before the plat, technically, you don't have a legal parcel. So that's the reason we're having problems with trying to approve that, is because that's part of the plating process. And so that's, I guess, the concern. If you want to grant that, we probably need some findings, otherwise you will get a lot of people asking for the same thing on large-scale developments. This isn't as large as some of the other ones you're going to see, but it's really difficult. What happens and what I'm afraid of, and maybe that's just the Chicken Little in me, is that you have this happen, and then now these plots get sold, people are wanting to move in, and they're yelling at the city to give them a certificate of occupancy, and it hasn't been recorded, and we don't even actually have a legal lot there yet. So those are the concerns, is we need to put some sideboards around doing this. If we're going to do it today, then we need to have some findings as to what the reasons or the cause to do this, when we haven't really done it on residential very often, and usually there's some compelling reason. I don't know what the compelling reason is here today. Timing is timing, and that's the same for everyone. That's not new. So I just caution that in creating a new process for this particular project, we may create more for other projects, and there are going to be some things, as Kyle stated, that sort of fall through the cracks, and all of a sudden, all we have is a property owner saying, "I want to move into my house, city, and you're holding me up." And we're saying, "No, we didn't do this, it's really caused by this." So that's my only concern about doing this, because it's not something we've done commonly.
Madam Mayor, may I comment?
Sure.
Actually, we did something like this approximately two years ago on a Da Vinci Park subdivision, where we had two parcels, and we were granted two early starts, and there were no issues there, it worked very well. On this particular project, we have four parcels, and that's why we're asking for only four lots. If we only had two parcels, we'd only ask for two. And once again, the lots can't be sold until the plat is recorded. So there's no possibility that you're going to have somebody coming down here yelling at the city that they can't get their C of O because it's not recorded.
That's the process.
Because it can't be sold until it's recorded.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burden.
Bob, the problem, and we've had this happen, is if it's not recorded, how do you know what the legal lot is? The description? I mean, you could be... The house could be within two foot of the... When they put the legal description in, it could be within two foot of the property, or it could be on the property line, which would be illegal. That's... And don't ever kid yourself, the first place they come looking is the city.
What we did previously was that that lot, the proposed lot, was specifically staked out by our surveyor, legal description written up for that proposed lot, meets and bounds legal description. And we can do the same with these. That way, we know that we're meeting all of the appropriate setbacks. Everything is located on the proposed lot, so that we don't get out of line from the proposed recorded... or yeah, proposed plat.
Caleb?
Yeah, I just wanted to build a little bit on that, maybe just to explain the process and why it is you plat first and then you build, and Mr. Burden beat me to it a little bit there. Technically, we'll be issuing a multifamily permit here. We got four buildings on a single parcel of record, so by definition, this is now a multifamily project, because they aren't on individual lots. And then the other point that I was going to make is through the plating process, it goes through the review of other agencies. Sometimes, I'll use ACHD as an example, that right-of-way may shift a foot or two. Well, if you're at the minimum setback, all of a sudden, you're back to the city council saying, "We need a variance," because now we're two foot or three foot of a setback, because an agency or joint trench or somebody else had an easement, or the county surveyor said, "This line needs to move here or there." That's why we do it in this order, is so that we don't have a structure, and now all of a sudden, the lot lines are in the wrong spot, or the structure's really in the wrong spot from the final plat. So I just wanted to explain why it is we do things in this order. It's not to be difficult, it's because we run into these problems when you do things out of order, things get constructed in the wrong place a lot of times. And so then they come back, as Mr. Burden said, and they said, "We need a variance now, because our lot's too small, or our setbacks are too narrow, and it's tough for us to review it, because there's no setbacks to review it against, there's no lot line, doesn't exist." So again, that's just some of the issue. I don't necessarily have a huge heartburn, but I would agree with Mr. Nary. The habit of doing this is what scares me a little bit, because while Mr. Unger may see this through, and he's done it once before with no issues, I'm pretty concerned if we set a precedent, and we start doing these residential ones over and over and allowing these early starts, they're going to become headaches.
Madam Mayor, may I respond? Our plans are approved by ACHD. The streets are locked in where they are, they're not going to move. Our sewer and water is in the streets. So the streets aren't going to move. The easements for the utilities on either side of the street will not move because of where the street is located. And certainly, through the surveying process and the approval process for the construction plans and everything, there's no reason for anything to move. So I don't feel that there's going to be an issue with any structure being built in the wrong place, if done properly.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
To that point, Mr. Unger, is it your representation of the city that should something change, and should a future review require a modification, that the developer will, at its sole expense, perhaps construct stuff... something, and then tear it down and start over, if necessary? That it's willing to assume 100% of the risk that there is some future change that requires the construction to be removed?
Mr. Burton, absolutely. The developer will accept any and all responsibility for the location of that building. And in the event, as minimal... With, you know, the odds are very extremely minimal that anything like that could happen, I'm at a 99% chance it's not going to happen, we would accept the responsibility of moving that structure, tearing it down or moving the structure itself. We would take that responsibility.
Mr. Burden.
Mr. Unger, that you're going to exclude our inspectors and everything, because when they come out there to inspect for your foundation and stuff, they got to have the proper line, so they know the setback's right and everything, you're going to exclude all that? You're going to underwrite that? If it's wrong, you tear it out?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Burden. Like I said, we will have our surveyor mark those points. In fact, the back pins are already... or not pins, but the stakes are set. But we will have those all identified by a surveyor, so that the inspector could come out and check the setbacks to verify that they're where they're supposed to be on the future plat.
But you and I both know that pins and stakes can be moved.
Pardon?
You and I both know that pins and stakes can be accidentally moved.
Yes, they can. There won't be any pins until after all the construction, the whole subdivision is constructed. That's the last thing we do is set pins before recording. So it would be up to our surveyor to stake those corners appropriately.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Councilwoman Milam kind of mentioned something that I think is worthy of exploring. And full disclosure, I'm a stickler for process and for precedent, and I recognize that there are certain situations that having this discussion is warranted. I guess I just haven't heard from you what the rationale behind changing our process and setting a new precedent for this council is, from your perspective? What your reason behind this request is? I kind of heard timing, but I didn't hear anything more than that. I want to give you the opportunity to articulate that.
We have been held up by the Highway District for almost four months on getting our plans approved because of the high groundwater in the area. We had to go through three different storm drain designs to finally get our plans approved by the Highway District. As such, we have lost the entire summer to build... to sell and build some homes on the project. We do not... You know, we're not paying cash for this project, it is a loan, and every day costs us more money in interest. If we wait... If we have to wait until the plat is recorded, which, like I said, is probably going to be late October, the builders that want to build in there are not going to be able to buy the lots until, you know, until that time, until November. And as such, it prevents us from starting to make some income off of the project. Whereas if we can get them started now, or within the next few weeks, then we would see some return as soon as we record the plat.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
You just said something, Bob, that I don't know if I heard correctly, or if I'm just not understanding. It kind of goes back to a previous conversation, but you said if you had to wait till October, the builders wouldn't be able to buy the lots until November? But the previous discussion was that you weren't going to be able to sell the lots until the plat was recorded anyway?
Right, correct.
Is that correct? So they're going to... So builders... A couple of different builders are just going to build houses on these lots prior to purchasing them?
Yes.
And who's taking the responsibility of moving them, if need be? Those individual builders, or you?
The developer.
The developer.
That's us.
Any other questions from counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burden.
That was a great question by Councilwoman Milam, that if the benefit to you with this is to get construction done and sell the lots ahead of schedule to generate revenue, but the lots can't be sold until the final plat's recorded anyway? So if that's the sequence that I heard, I don't know how that speeds it up for you.
Mr. Burton.
Maybe I heard it wrong.
I believe the arrangement that we have with these two builders is that they will come in and build, and when they get the C of O, that's when the funds takes place, the funding takes place. So consequently, it's a matter of three to four months, because they're working with us.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got some questions.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, maybe one additional question for staff before we close the public... Josh, can you... If I'm seeing things correctly, we had some requirements related to fire that what Mr. Unger meant with the fire department, they somewhat contradicted. And I'm hoping you can provide us why the left hand's saying one thing and the right hand's saying something different?
Sure. The applicant, or Mr. Unger, provided me the details of the location of the four lots on Monday. After the... We didn't have the details prior to the staff report, so we didn't know what lots they're proposing to build on. So that's why his discussion with the fire department was applicable on Monday, that on Friday, we didn't know what lots he was...
Great. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, anything else from counsel? If there's nothing further, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on item A.D.
Just D first, I think, because we want a public hearing on D.
Mr. Burden.
I got one question for legal. Bill, if we can put stipulations, what Mr. Unger testified to, that they would be responsible for any mistake, how legal would that be?
Well, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I mean, this is a modification of a development agreement, so we can create an additional condition that the developer, ULC management, would be solely responsible for any repair, restoration, or whatever to the property. But enforcing that, if they don't have the financial means to do that, I don't know how we do that. And at that particular point, again, it may be purchased by other people, and now that becomes another issue of they don't own the property any longer, or they have an authority or right to access it any longer to repair it. So again, it's something we don't do much, because of these kinds of things, that we follow a process for a reason, as Caleb stated. So we can certainly add that to a development agreement, but if we actually have to enforce it, it may be problematic.
Yeah, that's what I was...
Unless they want to post a bond. The only problem I have is I don't know how big the bond is.
I do that, though.
I mean, we would be shooting in the dark for that. Just to give counsel an example, and Caleb...
Just to give council an example, and Caleb or Josh have a better, probably have better specifics on it, but we had a building that was built recently behind the commercial buildings on Fairview, near Jericho, and they were built in the wrong spot because the lot lines weren't very good. And instead of coming back, they didn't come back and ask, they actually picked the building up and moved it. But that was on the owner. They, they built it in the wrong spot and they had to move it. But here, where we're gonna have multiple owners or potentially multiple owners, it may be more problematic than just simply moving a house.
Any other comments from staff? Applicants have any final words?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
I move by that we close the public hearing on H. 2016-0087. Includes D and E.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing on item 8D. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Council, we heard comments on both 8D and E, and we'll address item 8D, the modification first.
Of the development agreement.
Mm-hmm. The DA. Mr. Borton.
With regards to D, the development agreement, agreement modification, I applaud Mr. Unger for promptly visiting with fire and trying to address some of those concerns in, in a compressed schedule. I think that's very helpful. And I understand and appreciate what he's trying to do in trying to carve out the unique circumstance that warrants the relief requested is kinda what I struggle with. Process is important, but we don't want it to get in the way of perhaps a common sense request. However, we also heard, you know, one example of, of process, ACHD's utilization of its process, perhaps difficult as it was, might've caught, or caught some high water issues which had to be resolved that avoided future problems. While it might've been frustrating, it might've actually solved the problem that would've arrived, arose down the road. I'm, I would be interested in trying to find a way to make this work, but I don't know how to craft something like that. Mr. Neri gave one example of a additional provision, which the devil's in the details and how you could ever craft language that would capture the intent of what the applicant said. So I don't, if I were acting today, I don't think I would feel comfortable approving it. At best, I would table it a week to see if that's even viable, if at all. That, those are just my thoughts on, on D. If it were to be approved or were to move forward at all, because staff makes great argument as to why, you know, our objective process is in place for a reason, and it's to avoid these unintended consequences we might not otherwise appreciate in the heat of the moment of a public hearing. So staff's comments are well taken.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
I agree with Councilman Borton on the items, and I, I, I have a problem approving it right now for the reason of we have had some mistakes and stuff happened to us, and regardless of what anybody says, it comes, it falls back on the city. But in the same token, I don't like, I don't like delaying private business, private work. After all, they're the ones that pays our bills. But in the same token, I think we gotta use some common sense and, and make sure that we're not, we don't stick our necks out to get chopped off. And I would have no problem setting this back to another, next, one more week and so that staff and maybe applicant can work out with, along with legal, draft some language, language that we feel comfortable with, staff feels comfortable with, and the applicant feels comfortable with. That would be my preference right now.
If at all.
If at all.
Yeah. If at all. Yeah. Madam Mayor, to, to that point, there might not be, you know, conditions that truly would be acceptable, and, and those discussions with staff and the applicant might bring those concerns to light a little more than what we get at a hearing today.
Well, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
There's no other discussion.
Mr. Borton, before you make that motion, you may want to reopen the public hearing on item D unless you want to deal with it all under the final plat, but I believe it's under the one we did the public hearing for.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move that we reopen the public hearing on item 8D, 2016-0087. Second.
Is the motion specific to a recommendation from legal to bring back a recommendation on how this would be ordered should you agree to the modification?
Yes. That's in the motion to reopen, or is it the motion to continue? Either way.
The motion to reopen.
That would be the, the purpose and intent of the motion to reopen, yes.
Second agree?
Second agrees.
Okay. I have a motion, a second, to reopen the public hearing on item 8D. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Now I would need a motion to continue the public hearing for item D, and then we might as well continue the, the final plat in a separate motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move that we continue item 8D, 2016-0087, to August 23rd, 2016. Second.
I have a motion, a second, to continue item 8D to August 23rd. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Madam Mayor.
Item 8E, yes, Mr. Borton.
Move that we continue item 8E, final plat approval for H. 2016-0087 to August 23rd, 2016. Second.
I have a motion, a second, to continue item 8E to September 23rd. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Did I say September?
Both times.
I did?
I did?
I heard August.
Well, it's continued till next week, whatever I said. 8F is public hearing for item H. 2016-0060. Open this public hearing with staff comments.
Any mayor, members of council, this is an application for a comprehensive plan map amendment, annexation and zoning, and for a conditional use permit. So the overall site consists of 25.97, 97 acres of land, which is currently zoned RUT in Ada County, and is located at 4225 East Overland Road. The, there is no history on this property, as you see here in, in the aerial map, this is a county zone property, so there's no history in the city of Meridian as of now. The comprehensive plan of future land use map for this entire property is medium density residential. And the summary of the request, the applicant, Devco LLC, has submitted an application for the following. An amendment to the future land use map contained in the comprehensive plan to change the land use designation of 25.97 acres of land from medium density residential to mixed use regional. If you look here on the map, this, which is, it is this box here, as indicated by my mouse, that's the 25.97 acres the applicant is proposing to amend the comprehensive plan for mixed use regional. And 42, 42.18 acres of land to medium density residential in the comprehensive plan, land use designation, which is the other box here. So our, our existing land use is here on the top, and the proposed changes are here on the bottom. As well as annexation and zoning of 14.41 acres of land from RUT in Ada County to the CG zoning district, which is indicated by this black box here. As well as a conditional use permit for multifamily development, because this is consisting of 312 dwelling units in the proposed CG zoning district, which is again, this black box here. The applicant did submit a, a concept plan for the entire development, which does include some area that's located in Boise and not part of this application, just, just so that's clear. The concept plan travels over the city boundary into what is and will remain Boise City. So as I said, a, a concept plan for the entire development was submitted with the subject application. The concept plan depicts a mixed use development consisting of 10 commercial buildings ranging in size from 40,000 square feet to 3,500 square feet, access to the future development and various other commercial sites, and a 312 unit multifamily development. This is the first phase of a much larger development that is slated for a future application that the applicant will be submitting shortly. Prior to submitting an application to the city of Meridian, the applicant reached out to Boise City to determine the likelihood of being able to provide utilities to the 42.18 acres proposed to be included in the comprehensive plan of future land use map, which again is, is this box, is indicated by red here. It was determined that Boise City could not provide utilities for the property in question, and in a letter dated January 20th, 2016, sent to Cody Riddle, the current planning manager for Boise City, Lawrence Stewart of the city of Meridian, indicated that the area in question was included in the Meridian's master planning for sanitary sewer and water services, and that the property is serviceable by the city of Meridian. Subsequently, Boise City's, City Council deannexed the subject property on April 19th of this year, and a letter was sent to the applicant stating such. The applicant is now requesting to include the 42.18 acre parcel into the city of Meridian's comprehensive plan of future land use map designation with the medium density residential land use designation. I want to reiterate that adding this to the comprehensive plan of future land use map does not annex the property. That will have to be considered in a future application. It just gives the property a future land use map designation, but that's not final until the county approves this and alters the area of impact, which will take place once this is approved or, or by, by council or subsequently denied. Just wanted to make that clear. So the city has received a, a letter from Boise stating that this has been deannexed from their city because they're not able to serve it with their utilities. Moving on, the applicant requests approval to annex and zone 14.41 acres of land with a CG zoning district consistent with the proposed future land use map designation of mixed use regional to develop the multifamily portion of the property, again, indicated in the black box here, as a, as a multifamily project. In the application submitted, the applicant did submit a tentative approval letter from Ada County Development Services approving a property boundary adjustment in the configuration of, of the proposed development. Staff recommends that the applicant submit a letter of final approval from Ada County Development Services for the boundary land adjustment and a recorded copy of the record of survey prior to approval of the annexation ordinance by city council. Lastly, a conditional use permit is requested for the development of a, of a multifamily residential use on the subject 14.41 acre property in the proposed CG district as required by the UDC for a multifamily development within that district. The multifamily residential development is proposed to consist of 312, 312 dwelling units. The unit will consist of 204 two-bedroom units and 108 one-bedroom units, starting, containing 500 square feet and 1,200 square feet respectively. A 4,389 square foot clubhouse is proposed that will contain a business center, leasing office, exercise room, and enclosed bike storage with covered patio. Associated garage and carport structures are also proposed. The commercial portion of the site is not proposed to develop at this time, which if you go back to the concept plan, is the area indicated here. Again, that will come forward in, in a future application to the city. Because all the proposed units contain between 500 and 1,200 square feet of living area, a minimum of 78,000 or 1.78,000 square feet, that is, or 1.79 acres of common open space is required to be provided. A total of 2.55 acres of passive and active open space is proposed. Common open space is required to be a minimum of 400 square feet in area with a minimum length and width dimension of 20 feet. The calculation table depicts 111,383 square feet of common open space, so the applicant has exceeded the requirements of the UDC. In covering the commission recommendations, the commission did recommend approval with conditions. Staff has received no additional testimony since the commission hearing. The applicant, Mr. Jim Conger, was in favor. In opposition was Donna McDonald, commenting where Gary Glenn and Jared Jenkins did not receive any written testimony for the Planning and Zoning Commission. I was the staff member presenting. Bill Parsons also commented. Key issues of public concern were traffic onto Overland Road, access to Overland Road. Key issues of discussion by, by the commission were design of the apartments, access to Overland Road, amenities provided with the development, appropriateness of this property as part of a large mixed use designation. Commission did not make any changes, and there are no outstanding issues for, for the council. I would like to state that staff, as of today, has not received a revised staff report from the Highway District on this application. In their reviewing it, we asked if there were any large, large items that we needed to be aware of prior to this. The applicant has submitted, prior to the commission hearing, the applicant actually submitted a secondary access that will, is designed as follows. Overland Road is up here on, on the top, and the secondary access will connect to an existing sub-street in the Silverstone subdivision, or, excuse me, in the Silverstone Office Park, which is East Pooter Falls Street. With that, staff is recommending approval, and I'll stand for any questions you have on the, on the application.
Thank you, Josh. Council, any questions at this time?
I'd like to make comment.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Jim Conger, 4824 West Fairview Avenue. First, thank you for letting us be in front of you tonight, and we're excited to bring you this project. As you can see from our vicinity map here, we have a well-placed project that's centrally, centrally located to the mixed use region area with easy access to the commercial, retail, entertainment, and the freeway, to name just a few. I think, just touching briefly on Josh's point, it's been almost a year-long process that we petitioned the city of Boise. Several pre-council meetings and then obviously run through a public hearing to deannex. This took the 42 acres from Boise and brought it closer to the city of Meridian. We believe this is great for Meridian, of course, and, and a great addition to your east boundary that'll, that'll take it over to Cloverdale Road. This is just step one. We need to get the comp plan map amended so then we can take further steps in submitting our applications, which we are finishing the planning, and that will come, come, come soon. Staff did an excellent job on this project, and we thank, thank them for their experience and their assistance through the entire process. It's actually been a long one. And we do appreciate having a staff report recommending approval, as we've worked hard with staff, city fire, police, Public Works, and a couple other departments along the way to get this approval recommendation. We're in complete agreement with the staff report and look forward to approval tonight, and we'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Jim. Council, any questions?
Right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to provide testimony on this item? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Lee Colson, 2509 South Goshen Way.
Thank you.
My only thought, I'm not for or against the proposal, but I would like the developer to consider extending the path along the canal, the Rydenbaugh Canal. There's a path, there's an existing path that goes from Mount View High School along the canal to Eagle Road, and at Eagle Road, there's a pedestrian light where people using the path can cross. Then there's the, the path continues on the other side of the road up to where this property starts, and I'd like to see the path continue on to Cloverdale. There is a pedestrian light at Cloverdale. I would just like the developer to consider maybe extending that path along his property, along the Rydenbaugh Canal. That's my only thought when he goes to develop this land.
Thank you, Lee. Council, any questions? We appreciate you joining us.
Thank you.
Additional testimony? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make comment and certainly respond?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Jim Conger, again. This application actually doesn't get back to the canal, so we understand the concerns. We're pretty excited in our initial land planning. The city of Boise, or city of Boise slapped me. We brought you Boise's land, so I get one fufa, but the city of Meridian has the foresight of this regional pathway that we are incorporating in this next, basically the next phase that we're bringing in. So, there will be some internal pathway systems, and then, of course, the big daddy is the regional pathway, and then we are working to figure out how to cross the canal. So, there'll be plenty of work when that time comes. Working and doing some pathways around the canal's not going to happen with NAMPA Meridian Irrigation District, being that's the big Rydenbaugh. But we have the internal, and we have what we will be doing as following the city's comprehensive plan and the regional pathways. So, we look forward to that, but that'll be another application to look at. So, tonight, we definitely appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you and bring this mixed use that'll help the existing retail and commercial in that area. So, thank you.
Council, any questions? Thank you. Is there anything further from council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
If there's not, I would move that we close the public hearing on item H. 2016-0060.
I have a motion, a second, to close public hearing on item 8F. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor.
Or Burton?
Move that we approve item 8F, H. 2016-0060. I presume we're going to do these one at a time?
No.
Do them all at once?
They're...
Okay.
The number.
However you want to do it, Joe.
Doing them all at once.
However you would like to do it.
As long as that's permissible. We'll handle them all at once in one motion to approve that application, to amend the comprehensive plan, future land use map, the annexation and zoning of 14.41 acres, and a conditional use permit for the multifamily development.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item 8F. Any discussion by council? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Council, any items for consideration under item nine? I would just like to point out that we do have an upcoming town hall on the 31st of this month, so make sure that, mark your calendar, it's in South Meridian to... Yeah. We got that from our listening tour and thought it would be a timely place. It will be held at Hillsdale Elementary School. Give the public an opportunity to see the new school and hear a little bit more about the vision out in that area, as well as some other topics. So, mark your calendars, and I would move then to item 10, which is executive session and as per motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Move we go into executive motion as per item State Code, heading 4206-1D.
Second.
The motion is to adjourn into executive motion. I assume that was executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you call, roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?